So we will get started. I just want to welcome everybody. Thanks for doing this today. It's a good opportunity for the chamber to get you out in front of the voters and an opportunity to explain your position. So, thank you. First off, this question is for Bobby Jackson, Bobby Bozarth, and Richard, go take the lead on this.
Okay, so Bob, oh wait, Bob, Bob, we're gonna have you go first. Come up to the mic and tell us a little bit about yourself and why getting elected to the county commissioner is important to you.
I'm Bob Bozarth, I'm running for Lewis County Commissioner District Two. And first of all, I'd like to thank you all for putting this on. I've been a business owner for over half my life in Lewis County. And as most of you know, you end up ordering multiple hats, most of them all at the same time. I'm a contractor in Lewis County, and I deal with a lot of the permit processes and regulatory things that I think could be much improved in Lewis County. I know that Lewis County is making an effort right now to speed up the permit process, and I think that we need to enhance on that moving forward. I've got a, I have six grandchildren, I have my wife that I married 32 years ago right here in Lewis County, and I want to do everything that we can possibly do for the future of our next generation.
And the question for you, Bobby, is tell us a little bit about yourself and why getting elected to county commissioner is important to you. And if you need me to repeat questions, by the way, I can do that.
My journey for county commissioner started about 18 months ago, and when I made the decision to do this, it's because, basically, I love my children, and I really love my grandchildren. I have a vision for our county that includes them as a part of the growth and development of Lewis County. I firmly believe that my generation has a responsibility to be forward-thinking, in that everything doesn't end with us. We must be thinking about the future, we must be thinking about what Lewis County will look like for our children and our grandchildren. I have over 30 years of experience in sales-related employment, also in public relations, I've worked with the public for a number of years, I have around 10 years in formal ministry occupations, over 20 years in lay ministry, and so to say that working with people is a part of who I am, it's very much who I am. And I believe that we need a fresh approach to leadership in the county. I think it's time for us to come together with one purpose and one goal, and that is to see Lewis County grow to become the best it can possibly become, and that's the reason I'm running for Lewis County Commissioner.
Thank you, Bobby. You stay standing up there. Next question is, and this is to Bobby Jackson, what is your top priority project for the county, and how do you plan to implement it?
We talked about, a moment ago, about being forward-thinking. That involves a number of different things. It involves, obviously, flood mitigation, which we're on the verge of seeing a tremendous water retention system that can go into the PL area in the Willapah Hills that will begin that process of hopefully solving most of our flooding issues. We're also in the process of seeing local mitigation projects that, all these put together, our hope is that this will be the answer to shoring up all of our flooding problems here in Lewis County. Top priority for me there is to see that that work continues, to see that we see that whole process through. Secondly, it's gotta be jobs, it's got to be family wage, sustainable income jobs. Now, what are we talking about when we talk about that? Well, first and foremost, we have to do, we do have to talk about the timber industry. We've been slowly but surely losing our timber industry, and right now, DNR has given us another pushback of about 40 percent where we're gonna see timber income decline again in 2017, and so there's a scramble right now to shore up our budget. So where do we go from there? We've gotta start talking about industry. We've gotta start talking about more industry coming into our ports, we've gotta start talking about industry coming out into IPAT. I had an opportunity to tour IPAT here last week, and right now, we currently have a 25-acre area up there that can support a major industry. Those are things that are very important to me, because those things will create jobs for us, they will create our, they will create income going back into our economy and make us healthy again here in Lewis County. Those are my top priorities.
Thank you, Bobby. Bob, and for you, the next question, what is your top priority project for the county, and how do you plan to implement it?
You know, if I had to zero it down to one thing right now, I think it would be public safety. We have a problem right here in Lewis County. I was looking at the information last night, trying to figure out exactly what a crime rate in Lewis County is. I couldn't find any information to that effect, but what I did find was kinda interesting. In the state of Washington, on a per thousand basis, you are one out of 57 people, or no, I take that back, one out of 157 people, I believe it is, will be affected by some type of a crime in the state of Washington. Okay, so in the city of Centaria, one in 24 of us will be affected by a property crime. In the city of Chalhams, one in 13 of us will be affected by a property crime. So, we need to get a handle on this thing, and I think we need to start maybe thinking a little bit different way about how we deal with people that create crimes. One of the things is, our municipalities are kinda hand-strung, in the respect that we tend to send people that commit crimes down the road, because we spend a lot of money incarcerating them, and what happens is, we're paying about $65 a day at the jail, and that goes back to the municipalities. So we need to work on that. I certainly agree with Tim, or with, well, I guess that's it.
It's funny, as we move forward in this process, you know, you've got Bo Jack, and then you've got Bozarth, so, Bob, stay up, it's your turn again. Feel free to, if you need to elaborate on your last question through your first question, but just remember you have two minutes. What are your plans to restore harmony among the elected officials in the courthouse? And what would you specifically do to change the culture and leadership?
Okay, well, I wanna take advantage of that, because I wanna talk about timber industry, I wanna talk about farming industry, because that is one of our big priorities in this area. We've gotta create jobs, but remembering that government does not create jobs, government facilitates the ability for the private sector to create jobs. We're gonna have to do a little bit better job on moving bureaucracy out of the way in order to get that accomplished, and... What was the original question? I'm sorry.
Thank you. It says, what are the plans to restore harmony among elected officials in the courthouse, and what would you do specifically to change the culture of leadership?
Okay. Well, I think that, honestly, I don't think we do a horrible job of working together. We've got a lot of good people that work in Lewis County, in the municipalities, in the county as well, and I think that we just need to concentrate on a few issues when it comes to UGAs, as far as organizing things a little bit better, get everybody on the same page, and I think that's gonna be easily accomplished. I think we're all looking for the same goal, we're all wanting to improve Lewis County, we wanna speed up the permit process, and I think that harmony thing is gonna come. I think change of leadership will have a lot of effect on that.
Mr. Jackson? Do you want me to repeat the question?
No, I got it. I got it. One of the things that will happen when I become county commissioner is, I'm going to tell all of our directors to take a deep breath and relax. Leadership, real true leadership, understands that the leader can only get as far in his own policies as the people that are there that are able to get him there. So in other words, I don't have to be the smartest guy in the room. I'm surrounded by a lot of smart people. I've had an opportunity over the last nearly year and a half to talk to nearly every director in our county, and I can tell you that we have one of the greatest group of people available to us that are doing the business of our county every day. I think what has to happen is, in order to re-establish harmony among our elected officials and among all of our department heads, and when I say elected officials, I'm not talking about just inside the courthouse, I'm talking about within the cities and with our ports, that we have to be on the same page with everyone. Now, how do we get to where we wanna get to economically? Everyone's gonna have a different idea, and we need to be able to allow those people that are in those positions, whether they be with the ports, whether they be with the cities, to move forward with the ideas that they have. Our job is to support them. County commissioner has, there's no place for a county commissioner to tell anyone outside of the county what they can, or outside of his particular office, what they can and cannot do. His job is to facilitate a good atmosphere, to tell people, let's just, we're gonna work together, we're gonna work with you, we're not gonna work against you, and it's all about restoring those relationships with the people that we work with throughout the community.
Thank you. Next question, I leave with Bobby Jackson. What are your thoughts on a county executive form of county government? Does Lewis County need one? Why, or why not?
At this time, that's, that wouldn't even be a reasonable consideration, I don't think. I don't, I like the idea of a county administrator, but, again, without the economy to support such a position, it's really not feasible at this time. Now, a county administrator, from one standpoint of understanding the different avenues that we work within, is not a bad idea, but again, until we are, that's a conversation that's for down the road when our economy can, or our county's economy can actually consider that as a possibility.
Thank you. Bob Bozarth, what are your thoughts on a county executive form of county government? Does Lewis County need one, and why or why not?
You know, there's a reason we have elections, is to elect people to represent us, and right now, we're talking about electing county commissioners. I don't, I don't think there's room for a county executive, if you will, because at that stage of the game, you have lost your control. We need elected people to do what they're supposed to do, and the county commissioners are the administrative branch of county government. We don't wanna pawn that off on somebody that is not held accountable by the people.
Thank you. Richard.
Don't forget, you have your battle cards. I wanted to use it on that question. I was like, I got an answer, but, no, okay. We hear a lot about attracting more, oh, this is for Bob Bozarth, we hear a lot about attracting more business to Lewis County. However, Lewis County has a workforce problem. Businesses are already here, but struggle to find and hire people from our current workforce. People don't necessarily have the skills to promote themselves to employers, or we're missing a basic work ethic. What idea or program would you try to promote to support and better prepare our local workforce?
Well, I'm glad you asked that question, 'cause I'm right in the middle of it. To emphasize the question a little bit, you drive around Chalhams and Centaria, all over Lewis County, you're gonna see unemployment signs all over the doggone place. Yet we're supporting an 8.5, 8.2 percent unemployment rate? I think we need to do a couple things. Number one, we have to start training our people to fit the jobs that we have available in Lewis County. Parents, you need to tell your kids, it's okay to grow up and be a farmer, it's okay to grow up and be a logger. We don't all have to be computer techs. I think we need to start a dialogue with our schools, in the Centaria College, give more trade classes, so that we can, we need brick basters, we need sheet rock layers, we definitely need people to drive dump trucks and run equipment, and I think that's a large portion of our problem in Lewis County. The other big portion, it pains me to say it, but it's the truth, we gotta cut back on the social programs. We're paying way too many people to set a home and not be a productive members of society.
Bobby? We hear a lot about attracting more business to Lewis County. However, Lewis County workforce has a problem. Businesses are already here, struggling to find and hire people out of the current workforce pool. People don't have the skills to promote themselves or the basic work ethic. What is your idea and program you would try to promote and support to better prepare our local workforce?
We have a lot of high school kids that are graduating with their high school degrees, and also because they're in the STEM program, they're graduating with their two-year degrees as well, and these young people are making their way off to college to finish out their degree programs. Our hope has always been that they would come back here to Lewis County, to bring that expertise back here, and to invest back into the county that they grew up in. Sadly, we don't have the types of jobs at this point that can attract our kids to come back, so what do we do in the meantime? And I think the problem, Richard, is a lot broader than just a small segment of our population. I think we have some other issues that are mixed into that that we have to face. One of my goals, one of my personal goals, is I would love to see an industry to locate here in Lewis County, and that would come in and, as part of their being here, they take a good, strong look at our young people, and they take a look at resourcing them to become productive members of our society here, and what I mean by that is, that we take some of these kids that are going through the STEM program, and that an industry comes in and they resource them to finish out their college education, much like the military does when they send kids to military institutes. They will pay for their education, there'll be an expectation after they come out that they'll give so many years of military service. I'd like to see the same thing in industry here, that if an industry can support some of our young people to go to school and finish their education, when they come back, they will have a job and they will pay for their education that way. One of the things I am very, very excited about is the fact that Centaria College is making moves towards more four-year degrees, also more technical training. I personally would like to see a tech school here at some point, and it can be attached to Centaria College in another location. I think there's a lot of things we can do, and we certainly can't talk about all of them here in this one setting, but those are just a couple of things that I'm thinking about.
So, first off, let's give him a big round of applause. So, the one thing I will tell everybody in the audience is, they'll be hanging out afterwards if your question wasn't asked, that you can come up and talk to them each personally, and what we're gonna do is, because you didn't use your revival cards, we would like you each to do a 30-second close and add anything you might wanna add. And we'll start with, who did it first last time? So, we'll start with you, Bobby.
It has been, it's been an honor to be here today, and I wanna thank Alicia and her staff, and Richard, and Todd for being here today to put on this candidate forum. This has been a great process for me, it's been a great educational experience over the last year and a half, learning all I can about the courthouse, learning all I can about what it means to be a part of Lewis County's government structure here, and I can tell you this, this is what I take away from this, I am going to be a working commissioner. You will see me in that office five days a week, working, because that's who I am, that's what the work ethic is that I have. Am I done? Already? I told someone I'm good with, you know, an opening three points and a close, I barely got three points, right? It's okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
You know, we're gonna need some help here in Lewis County, and it's gonna have to come through the state. So I'm gonna use my 30 seconds to give you my recommendations if we can support it in this upcoming election, 'cause it's the most critical election in our time. Let me tell you something, we're gonna have to get Bill Bryan elected, we're gonna have to get Marty McClatchens elected, we're gonna have to get Joseph Thrumel elected against Bob Ferguson, who's our Attorney General. We're absolutely gonna have to get Steve McLaughlin elected. We're gonna have to get Chris Vance elected, Joe Walsh at the 19, or, uh, Joe Walsh.
Okay, thank you both very much, and what we're gonna do, since we're running on schedule, is if we do have time at the end, we might have group questions for everybody from the audience. Okay, so Edna and Dan, can you grab your podiums?
Start your engines.
Welcome. All right, and we will start with Edna. Edna, if you wouldn't mind, tell us a little bit about yourself and why getting elected to the county commissioner is important to you.
Well, my name is Edna Hunt. I have lived here 47 years, I'm a graduate of Onalaska High School, I graduated from Centaria College, and then went on to St. Martin's University and received my degree. I came back here to work. I came back here to make sure that our county is the best it can be. As a county commissioner, I look forward to the future, as has been said before, flood mitigation, that is number one. We have a stereotype that we flood here, and many employers don't wanna come here and think, "Oh, it floods down there," even though we have some dry land. The other piece, of course, is jobs, jobs, jobs. When I look at IPAT, Industrial Park of Transalta, what we have there is a jewel in the making. In visiting with Alan Rowe last week and looking at that 25 acres that Bobby mentioned, I said, "This is something for our kids and our grandkids." We have 100-acre plots there. Looking at Winlock, Benaloya property, that's a difficult one, but we're working on that. So my priorities are mitigation of floods and jobs, jobs, jobs in Lewis County.
Thank you, Edna. Dan, same question, tell us a little bit about yourself and why getting elected to the county commissioner is important to you.
All right, well, the first time I ran for office was City Council for City of Centaria in 1999. The reason I ran is I lived one block away over here, and I had two drug dealers on either side of me, and I said to my wife, "Either we're gonna get involved and make a difference, or we're gonna move." So I ran for office, and we had 25 empty storefronts downtown at that point, we had a budget that was out of whack, and we had infighting on that council. So I ran, and just by clearing the air, we started new jobs, we started a renovation of downtown, and we started, and we got the budget back on track, and we had great reserves by the time I left nine years later. A few years later, I ran for Port Commissioner, 'cause we had the same kind of problems. There was some fighting going on in the community, because they were getting accused of doing something wrong, there was, the economy just tanked, and like everybody, the ports suffered from that, and we needed jobs. So, I ran for that position, and we're doing great now, you see Centaria Station going, we're doing good on job creation, our budget's good. So then I saw the county, and I said, "There's a problem. We've got fighting going on between the county and other organizations, we've got a budget that's using reserves to balance it every year, that's not sustainable, and we need to create jobs in this community." So that's why I'm running. I wanna be a part of making that successful, and I think I've done it for 16 years that I've been in public office, I'd like the opportunity to do it for Lewis County.
Thank you. We'll start with you, Dan. What are your plans to restore harmony among elected officials in the courthouse? And what would you do specifically to change the culture of leadership?
Well, the first thing I would do, and I've already talked to a lot of them, is I wanna work with them for a day. I think the way you change culture is you get relationships, and it works in my job as a Realtor, that's how I get negotiation, that's how I help in mediations, is you build relationships. And so the first thing I wanna do is get to know everybody I'm gonna be working with, find out their goals and objectives, and let them ask me what mine are, and I've told everyone, "I wanna work with you for a day, for a full day, from the time you come in in the morning to the time you leave." I'm a hands-on person, and not only just the directors, but also at the trenches. I wanna see what the guy on the street sees for a day, and understand their position, and with that knowledge, then we can pull people together, we'll build relationships and that, and we'll be able to come to a meeting where we decide, as a group, what's our goal, what's our future, what's our vision for this county? Can't be mine, it's gotta be, it's gotta be ours. And like Bobby Jackson said, you know, you're just the guy at the top, you create the opportunity, but the people that work around you are the ones that actually do it. So, my goal is to build that coalition with those people, and let's make this place an amazing county.
Edna, what are your plans to restore harmony among elected officials in the courthouse? And what would you specifically change the culture of leadership?
One thing is that you're supposing that there is a cultural, culture of disharmony in the courthouse. I have to tell you, when you have type A personalities in every elected office, and you have type A personalities in every director, everyone has an idea, everyone has a strong idea. Now, I'm accustomed to being a manager in state offices, where I supervise people, and I say, "Okay, you're gonna do this job, you're gonna do this job, let's work on this project." When you're an elected official, as a county commissioner, you have three strong personalities. I cannot say, "Bill, you're gonna do this," or, "You're gonna do this, Gary." Have I said that, Gary, to you? No. Not literally, yes. Good answer, there's two of us working together right now, 'cause there's two of us in there. So what it is, it's a quorum, so there has to be two out of the three making decisions. I've talked to Judge Hunt recently, I said, "You've been through a lot of commissioners, so what's your thought?" He said, "Three strong commissioners who are doing the best job I've seen done in a long time." And I'm like, "I know he's going out of office, so he must not have anything that he wants from us." However, people want us to have dollars. So now we have a position where we're getting less money from the state, they usually give us $200,000 for engine and defense, now it's $1.2 million we spend. Judge Hunt wants more money to have that engine and defense. So we've got people that want it, add more people onto their jobs, the sheriff would like five more officers, but we have a budget that does not allow it. So our commissioner's popular, can we have harmony? Yes, you can, but we have a lot of challenges, we have to be good managers.
Thank you.
Can you use one of these?
Yes, finally.
Type A personalities probably describe most of the people in this room, and we all find a way to work together. We're business leaders, we're people that get things done, and that's the kind of people I wanna work with, is the ones that can get things done. So how do you create harmony with those group, that group of people? Those are skills that you learn. I've spent years developing those skills, not only as a Realtor where I negotiate every single day on contracts, but I also volunteered at the mediation center and went through their training program. This is the Lewis County Mediation Center.
Sorry about that. And, so next, we've got Edna, to you. How can the county increase revenues when it's held to no more than a 1% tax increase per year by statute?
Number one issue we have in getting our revenues increased is the timber industry. Now, some people say, "Get over it, go find another industry." This is in our blood, the timber industry, and Gary Stamper's meeting with DNR tomorrow, and we continue to work on the state level. We work with Jamie Herrera Butler so that we can harvest our forests. It's really a shame, you see, we have forest fires, that we could have harvested that lumber and have revenue, but the feds would rather have it burn up, because ecologically, they don't wanna mess with the forest. Let them grow, let them grow, they grow so big, we can't take them to the mills. Number two, we need to talk to Richard DeBolt and folks about some of the unfunded mandates we get. Going back to engine and defense. We're mandated to do it, but it's more, or remodeled. But, the piece is, more revenue. We're having a legislative roundtable on Friday at the courthouse from 9:00 to 10:30 to meet with people like Richard and talk about the issues we have, including our flood mitigation. We need help with money with that, although we have some other ideas, we need money, and it doesn't always have to come out of our pocketbook when it really is three counties that are affected, and the whole state of Washington because of I-5 gets closed. Revenues are a difficult thing, but we're working hard on them. We're trying to do efficiencies. And when you think about, okay, easy place would be, let's cut staff. Most of our staff are delivering services. So who gets hurt in that exchange? That's the people receiving those services. Lewis County voters have said law enforcement and law and justice does the number one thing they want, and then after that, they want roads. So when we look at the expanding costs of our costs in our jail, and we're going to be looking to you, Richard, also regarding medical help in the jail. Thank you very much.
Dan, same question. How can the county increase revenues when it's held to no more than a 1% tax increase per year by statute?
Well, the goal is to not have to tax the people. That's not what you want to do. You want to create opportunities for development and new revenue sources. So everything that was described is expecting somebody else to change their opinion on an issue, and then that's going to save us. Well, good luck with that. It doesn't work out that way in my business. Lenders come to us with new requirements, and you just learn how to suck it up and work with the new requirements, or you don't sell any homes. I think it's the same with the county. What can we do as a county? We can make our permitting process one of the best in the state. So the companies look at us and say, I want to go to Lewis County. That's a place that can get my project done quickly. We have a development out on Middle Fork Road that's about 3,000 homes. It's been sitting there for 15 years at least, still not approved. That's ridiculous. It shouldn't take that long. Now, some of that's government agencies, but we need to do our part to get stuff like that ready to move and ready to build quicker. I want to, I want to be the model of efficiency in Lewis County. So, you know, you can have a choice. You could say, I want to be the second best, the 10th best. I think we want to be the best. And I think we want to be the best at everything that we're involved in. That's the part government can do. That's the part you can do as a Lewis County commissioner. The other stuff, you're expecting somebody else to react, but good luck with persuading one of those organizations to back off on their regulations. It's not that easy.
Lewis County has 77 checkbooks. Can you believe that? 77 funds that we have. So it's not just one general fund, it's not just one work fund. We've got a balancing act. So we have to look at each one of those funds to see, are we spending our money appropriately? How can we cut it? When we talk about our permitting, we just finished Impact Washington reviewing our permitting, and we're going to be in the constant improvement phase. So one thing we're going to do is have a master application, and it's going to be online. Is my time done?
Your time is up. All right.
I'm good. Saved my last one.
All right, Dan. On the written portion of this debate, you were asking a question regarding a balanced budget and whether the county is running on a balanced budget. Could you please answer that question elaborately on your answer?
City of Centuria a few years ago came up with financial policies that said, how are we going to handle ourselves during the budgeting process? And one of those items was, we will not approve a budget that requires reserves to be used to balance the budget. If we do, if we find ourselves in a position that we have to, then we will make sure that we have a plan in place to replenish those funds. First, Lewis County has been using reserves for a long time to try to balance a budget, and they bounce around with it, but they need a minimum of eight and a half million to cover what would be a worst-case scenario of three months with no income. They're going to go below that by their own projections by next year, and they don't have a plan to stop that, other than, let's see what we can do. Well, that's not good enough. When you're doing your budget process, you need to have that plan established. You also need to know, what is a good reserve? Is it 7.5 times your annual gross income? Is it 10 times? Who knows? They don't know, they don't have a number. So we need to figure out clear policies that actually say, here's how we're going to spend our money, here's what we're going to do if we find ourselves in a deficit, but we will not use reserves to complete our budgeting process. And then at the same time, we need to increase those reserves, because we will have stuff come up that will demand us have money available very, very quickly. It could be the flooding issue. It could be a defense that we have to participate in that could cost the county millions of dollars. It could be a road project that needs to be repaired, and FEMA's not going to replenish the money right away. We have to have that money sitting there, ready for those kinds of things. So my policy would be, let's stop using reserves to balance it, and then let's have policies in place that make sense.
Edna?
Now, you're right, Dan, about the city council and what we did there. We had buckets. I was on the council during that time. And I have to tell you, from being on the city council to being a county commissioner, there's a great deal of difference. We have $110 million budget. And yes, we have to protect our reserves. So at this point, it was around $8 million. The government accounting principles say you should have two months in reserves so that if you have some kind of problem, you can, you can pay your people, you can get services rendered to your constituents. However, if you have flooding, you should have three, and we do have the three there. Is it easy to balance a budget when you've got 77 checkbooks and 77 funds coming in? No. But we do have a plan. And if you come to any of our budget meetings, we ask, what is essential? If you want something for the future, it goes in this pile, because we're not accepting those at this point. So what are the issues that you have? We have a new term, OPM, other people's money. That means if there's a federal grant out there that will help us put some people on the road until we get our tax revenue up so we can protect people, that may be consideration. So we get dollars from the state, we get dollars from the state to help us with our flood mitigation. But when we look at what it's going to take, and talking to John Braun, we're talking about using part of our '09 funds to potentially put a million dollars of state match into that. We feel that would help us move along. The county budget is very complicated. But I have to tell you, I have to brag, because I'm talking to John Braun again, I said, so about the state, so how much revenue do we have in there? How many months can we last? And he says, one month. And the county can last three months.
Yeah, I have to say, my opponent, as much as I like her, she seems overwhelmed with this budgeting stuff. She talks about these 71 or 77 checkbooks, and it sounds like it's a little scary. I got to tell you, that's just, that's just business as usual, and we need to work with that. Now, can we be, should we be better than the state? Why are you comparing yourself to somebody else who's doing it bad? We need to be better than that. So let's, let's move on and be good at this.
Okay, thank you. Next question, Edna, you got to let into this one a little bit. Do you think .09 funds have been spent appropriately in the last couple of years when relating to job creation projects? Why or why not? Please give a few examples.
I'm recently on the '09 committee, and I'm looking back at some of the expenditures and, you know, looking at all throughout the county. What I see as a program evaluator, we haven't asked those folks, after their project's done, how did it work out, how many jobs did come in? And then I think of the '09 funds, it has been pretty diverse, and when I look at the voting record, it's been pretty much unanimous during the whole time. We have port representatives, city representatives, county representatives, industrial commission representatives on that group. And so there's a lot of discussion. I'm in the mind for the next four years to take a look at using those funds for flood mitigation. And talking with John Braun, he's saying, what's the county going to pony up if we're building a big dam down over IPL? The state can't do it, Richard doesn't have all the dollars to do it, but he wants us to put some money in. So I think '09 funds in the future, we should be looking at using that for the flood mitigation. And I believe we should, like I said, we should be probably doing a better job of evaluating the money we gave and how many jobs were created as a result.
Thank you, Edna. Dan, same question. Do you think .09 funds have been spent appropriately in the past couple of years when relating to job creation projects? Why or why not? Please give a few examples.
Sure. I'm on the .09 committee as well. I got put on it about a year and a half ago. And my first meeting, I said, okay, how much money do we have and what's the parameters that we distribute this money from? Well, they didn't have any of that information. So the next meeting, we had, here's the rules for how this money is distributed. The county commissioners had decided that about $100,000 goes towards local projects like parks and that kind of stuff. And then they said they thought they had about one and a half, well, they get about a million dollars a year in that fund, and they thought they had about a million dollars. But what we found is, most of it had been earmarked, and we had about $400,000. So we were ready to give away, or they were ready to give away a million dollars, and we only had $400,000 to work with. So then we started, I started asking the question, what are we, what are we doing? I mean, is this, what's this fund supposed to be? It's economic distress, so we're a distressed county. So what are we doing to get out of that? I mean, we don't want these funds forever, right? We want to stop being distressed. So we need to work on using those funds only for economic development purposes, things that'll bring infrastructure into the area that no other money is earmarked for. Now, things like parks are wonderful, we all support that kind of stuff. Bathrooms or street signs or, you know, that's, those are things it's been used for. But those things don't create jobs, and this money is supposed to be used for those things that create jobs. So let's make sure our focus is very, very narrow. I know with Transalta and the millions of dollars they've been, they're pumping into our community, they have very strict standards. And then you fill out an application, right? And you don't actually come to the board to give the money, the board decides. I think it needs to go that way with the .09 funds as well. We need to have very strict standards, very strict criteria, and it'll become very clear if your project is worthy of these funds. Not to say your project isn't worthy, but not, maybe not from these funds.
And we've got a rebuttal?
I've decided not to. We'll save it.
We pulled it. Well, that was the last question, so... Can you use it now?
Yes.
Okay.
At this point, we're getting a million dollars a year, and when we look, talk to John Braun, so we said, within three years, we could probably put $3 million towards the flood mitigation efforts. Those funds are there. Another piece of '09 is that we have a diverse county. So what goes in Packwood may not be Centuria or Chahalas. So people on that committee have to be pretty mindful about what's out there and what can help them. We just gave money to the city at Toledo for...
Well, you can continue on that thought, because we're arguing, allowing each one of you 30 seconds to close. And so we can start right here.
Well, firstly, I'm going to say is, I got to tell you, each one of these people deserve a huge thanks, because it's not easy being up here and running for office. Not only do you get paid to do it, but you give up your whole summer to run for office too. So anybody willing to sit here or be up here deserves your respect, for sure. On the other side, I'll say, I look forward to, I have passion for this county, and that's why I'm running. And I would love to be your next Lewis County commissioner. I think change in that office would be very beneficial. Thank you.
I want four more years so I can help Lewis County be the best it can be. I've been running for election the last four years. I've been from PL to Packwood, from Vader to Centuria. I get texts from citizens in the middle of the night. How many of you got a text from me at 2:00 in the morning at times? Yes. I want communication, and I think that's what will help our community, is communication one-on-one. And we're making progress on that, and I'm looking forward to making progress on communication, flood mitigation, and jobs, jobs, jobs.
Let's give a big round to both of them.